And we will entertain motions.
Okay. I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person. And negotiations, collective bargaining negotiations.
Second. Moved by Maura, second by Adam. Discussion, conversation. All in favor? That passes unanimously. We anticipate to be back right around 7:00 PM. Thank you, good folks. We'll see you shortly. Have some board members that will be joining us. Thank you all for your patience. We are returning back then to public session. And the next part of our agenda would be to see if there are any modifications to the agenda. Hearing none, we will continue. And that brings us to the receiving and hearing of delegates. A short word about our public comment. A reminder that we ask according to board policy that no individuals are named, be it staff, board members, or students. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. There will be a timer. Of course, if you go over that and you are close to finishing, we will be as gracious as we can to allow folks to finish. The board policy also sets public comment at 30 minutes. Once we are past 30 minutes, the board can always pass a resolution to extend public comment. I'll make record of when the 30 minutes is, just to make us aware. And then we can entertain motions depending on the number of folks that we have signed up. But I wanted to make sure that we are all somewhat familiar with the same page. And again, the things that I'm sharing right now are not for this evening. It's been board policy. It's been adopted for some years and what we've been trying to do. So with that being said, we will begin with our hearing of delegates and I will yield to my colleague Maura Lang, who will also do the best job possible at pronunciations, but please have grace with us if we happen to mispronounce someone's name. And we may ask you to state your name so we can make sure we capture it in the minutes correctly.
I think I've got this one right.
Hi, my name is Randy Beckman. I'm a student taught at Henry St. John's School. I then got hired at Feld Sherman in 1983. I continued to work there until I retired in 2021. I work as a long-term sub now, some at the high school, and I also work for Kids Discover the Trap. And I really like working for this school district. To begin, I want to thank you for your work on the board and know that I support and work. A positive part of being employed by the district was our contract. I enjoyed and still enjoy the benefits of our Blue Cross Blue Shield program. Since 2019, retirees have been unilaterally moved from Blue Cross plan, we were promised throughout our career, to two less comprehensive health insurance plans. On January 1st, 2021, the district imposed an advantage plan on Medicare eligible retirees. Many employees like the program. It's run by Aetna and owned by CBS, a behemoth in the health industry. Retirees on advantage are not on traditional Medicare. Unlike retirees on traditional Medicare, they do not enjoy the ability of going to almost any physician or hospital in the nation. Unlike retirees on traditional Medicare, they cannot receive medical care without prior authorization from the insurance company. Some retirees have had very serious issues with this program. In 2023, after highlighting many problems with the advantage program, Medicare eligible retirees were offered an option to go back to Medicare with a Medigap program serviced by the Hartford. Of the 800 retirees and partners eligible for this option, around 270 returned to traditional Medicare with the Hartford supplementary plan. At that time, the board approved a resolution to continue conversations for our group. Those who had retired but not yet reached 65 or Medicare eligibility. Last week, 14 months after the Board of Ed resolution called for discussions between our group and the district, a few representatives from our group met with Mr. Van Kuren to discuss the issue. The group that stands here today is a group that has retired but are not yet Medicare eligible. We have not been offered the choice made available to the older group of retirees. As someone who sat on two negotiating teams, I can say that we worked hard to get language in our contract that protected our health insurance, that we believed would follow us into retirement. We gave up other benefits and wages to maintain this high-quality health insurance. We're asking the district to provide our group with an option to have traditional Medicare with a Medigap program, such as the Hartford, as we had expected, or traditional Medicare with a Blue Cross as secondary insurance. This is a contractual issue, an equity issue. We're not asking for something special, but for something we believe the district is obliged legally to remedy. Thank you for your piece of earth.
Next, we have Dwayne Divini.
Dwayne Divini. Some history. In 1974, the Supreme Court ruled that school districts were required to provide children who spoke other languages full and equal access to the curriculum. 10 years later, the Ithaca School District started to implement the Lao remedies by hiring me and two other teachers of English as a second language. During the first 13 years of my time in the district, LGBT teachers did not have equal access to health insurance. In 1997, we came before the board to advocate for health insurance for same-sex partners of teachers in the district. The board back then concurred, both by policy and by contract. As you may recall, it still wasn't entirely fair, as the government taxes health insurance benefits for domestic partners as if it were income. Additionally, every year partnered couples have had to submit notarized affidavits to the school district. Later on, I became partnered, and to my great joy, also became a parent. Finally, in 2015, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of marriage equality for all couples nationwide. Upon marrying two years later, health insurance finally did feel equal and fair. No more affidavits to notarize, no more tax penalties to pay. Now, 27 years later, I'm back here before you once again. The issue is slightly different, but the ask is the same: fair treatment. In 2020, after a 45-year career as an educator, I retired. Fortunately, the provision for dependent children in the Affordable Care Act was still in place. And so even though I went on Medicare, my kids were still covered. I am deeply appreciative of this support for my family. Our son, turning 26, will age out in June, but our daughter won't reach that age for several more years. We can't know what those years will hold for her, but we have great comfort in knowing that her healthcare needs will be met. My ask is simply this: when my last child turns 26, I would like to be given, along with all teachers who become Medicare eligible, the same choice that folks in my retirement cohort were given last year: the choice between coverage through traditional Medicare with a supplemental plan or a Medicare Advantage plan. As did past boards, please do what's right and fair. Thank you for your time.
Next, it's Sarah Sheng.
All right. So I retired last spring after 21 years of teaching social studies at Ithaca High School. I loved my job. And I'm here tonight also to talk about retiree insurance. I started researching Medicare choices because I just recently turned 65 and was trying to figure out what to do. And so in doing that, as I did the research, the one thing that every expert I read about agreed on is the answer to the question, which is better? Traditional Medicare or Advantage Plans is, it depends. And I need to put my reading glasses on. And it depends on a number of things. Simply based on the fact that that's the reality, I find it hard to understand in our district where there's a lot of focus on voice and choice for students, that we would not have that same option for teachers. So the district, I believe, should allow retirees to do their research into the two options: traditional Medicare plus Medigap versus Advantage, and then make decisions on the plan that best meets their particular health insurance needs. I believe that the language in the contract that was mentioned does give us that right to have. The wording is Medicare Supplemental Plan, and I believe that's what the Hartford is, and that's what I would like to have. So I'm frustrated that I can't make that choice. It's likely that a number of retirees will choose the Aetna Advantage Plan, which the district wants, because it has lower upfront costs and some specific benefits that Hartford doesn't have. When retirees were given the option of choosing the Hartford Plan, only about 30% made that choice. Given that none of us can predict with accuracy what our healthcare needs will be in the future or where in the country we might choose to live, some people, like myself, want the option to pay the difference in premium costs associated with the Hartford Plan for added peace of mind. I do not want to be in a managed care program where non-doctors have the option of disallowing certain kinds of care or dictating what doctors I can see. A number of retirees have previously shared with the board specific problems they experienced under the Aetna Plan. This was their lived experience. It doesn't mean that everyone will have those same problems, but the district should not dismiss concerns based on those experiences as being somehow overblown. Thank you.
Ilayne Bach.
Good evening. My name is Ilayne Bach, an ICSD employee from 1979 through 2008. And here's my little public service announcement. I've just come from being one of the judges for the poetry slam. I have one of the poets here. Come on here. Don't knock that against my three minutes, please. But it's a delight to still interact with students, although I'm now 71 years old. We're fortunate that many retirees in their golden years continue to support children in this district in many ways. For example, GoTutor, staffed by ICSD retirees, has provided tutoring for students in the district for more than 15 years now, at no cost to the district. ICSD retirees continue to support the district's mission, much as they did over their lifetime of service. So the Board of Ed can recognize that service by treating the under-65s equitably now, and that's my transition to Medicare. So I spoke before the Board of Education in October of 2022 to urge you to allow retirees age 65 and over the choice to return to original Medicare insurance that was enforced when most retirees had reached Medicare eligibility. This desire to return to the fine Medicare coverage we initially enjoyed was due to continual issues with prior approval and denial of claims that rose with Aetna Advantage. Such problems are consistent with 2018 and 2022 reports from the Office of Inspectors for Medicare and Medicaid Services. As I noted that October, while the ICSD custom Aetna plan may offer more than the individual Advantage Plans, ICSD retirees face the very same problems with prior approval and denial of care that are outlined in the charges made by the Office of Inspectors for Medicare and Medicare Services, as well as a more limited network of providers, especially out of state. So attached, and I'll send you your homework now. The most recent reports. So they're not attached, they're right here. These are the more recent reports of issues with Medicare Advantage programs, including custom PPO plans such as the one offered to retirees at present. We're fortunate and we are thankful that the Board of Ed listened carefully to our serious concerns and was responsive in granting then-Medicare-eligible retirees the option of returning to traditional Medicare with a Medigap supplement and a prescription plan. So I'm here tonight to thank you for that consideration, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. But I'm urging you to extend the same option to all ICSD retirees as they reach Medicare age. The board noted in their February resolution they'd continue to discuss that possibility, so please follow through on your promise to weigh this request once again, so that all retired, long-term employees upon reaching Medicare eligibility may collect the Medicare option that best suits their needs, acknowledging the commitment that was made to children in this district with their long-term service and in many cases their continuing service. Thank you.
The next speaker we have signed up is going to speak virtually. Alexis Stingle. No. Speaking virtually, or she? Oh, she's not. Oh, she's not on? Okay, and she's not in the room. Okay. Moving on to Aurora Royal.
Hi, my name is Aurora Roger. Sorry, Maura.
Oh, sorry.
I know, it's French, it's hard. So hi, I teach social studies at LCS with these folks, and I'm the secretary of the Ithaca Teachers Association. So the last school board meeting was full, like jam-packed, with residents who were worried about their tax bill. Residents shared concerns that they, or those they love, would soon be priced out of the community that they call home. As a taxpayer myself, I felt that pain and fear, and I was relieved when the board listened and decided to find places that don't directly face students to trim. But as a teacher, I know that this budget is crucial. Running high-quality schools isn't cheap. We are experiencing a crisis in teacher morale, leading to high turnover and understaffing. We have a massive shortage of substitutes, causing daily scrambles just to cover absent staff. And our students, still recovering from the pandemic, need more support academically and emotionally in order to thrive. This budget must pass if we want to give our students the schools they deserve. But the anger expressed at the last meeting is not to be discounted. We just need to shift its focus from Lake Street to Albany and East Hill. School funding in this state is systematically unfair. Schools are primarily funded through local property taxes, which is the big bill that many of people are raging at right now. And the state also contributes some in order to fund low-income districts more equitably. The issue, which Maura laid out in our last meeting, is that they determine how much aid we get based on the wealth in the community, not factoring in the tax-exempt status. In fact, over 40% of the property in our district is owned by Cornell and is not taxable. Why do surrounding districts pay so much less in property taxes? It is because the state pays their bill while we have a $10 billion endowed institution camping out tax-free. Cornell's wealth is preventing us from getting the aid we deserve. This is obviously unfair, and we in the ITA will be fighting through our state union, NISIT, to reverse it through the newly proposed funding formula changes. We should not be penalized at the state level for Cornell and the other tax-exempt properties that don't pay their fair share. But is it right that the largest employer and wealthiest institution in the district pays next to nothing for our schools? We know in ICSD that we educate the children of Cornell employees. If Cornell were to pay taxes, it would owe our district over $46 million. Princeton, New Jersey, is a similarly sized town and school district, and their Ivy League university contributes $2.75 million annually to their schools, while Cornell only recently upped their contribution from the measly $500K to $650K. According to the Fair Share Campaign, despite having nearly a third of the enrollment of Cornell, Princeton contributes 5.6 times more per child to the local schools. We need contributions at this level and beyond. Cornell recently agreed to more than double its contribution to the city of Ithaca, now paying more than $4 million a year, and ICSD is next. It is time for Cornell to show us if they really care about education in our community. So let's make Cornell pay and vote yes on the ICSD budget.
Catherine Sernera. Did I do it right this time, Catherine? I practiced.
Hi, everybody. My name is Catherine Sernera. I am a 20-year veteran in the ICSD, and I currently serve as the president of the Ithaca Teachers Association. I was in this room at the April 16th board meeting when many community members expressed their deep frustration and pain at the amount originally, the originally proposed budget would increase their personal tax burden. As a taxpayer in the Ithaca City School District, I certainly share this concern. However, it is important to remember that we live in a school district where the state has determined that 70% of the entire budget should be funded by taxpayer contributions, which are necessary to pay the people who work here while maintaining strong programming for our students. Over the past month, I've listened to the Board of Education members and community members who've asked difficult questions about this budget in light of the general economic needs of our taxpayers and the recent ballooning assessment values many of us have received. In particular, I would like to recognize the board members, who I'm not going to name because I can follow the rules, who developed and proposed alternate budgets that reduced the originally proposed budget while explicitly excluding reductions in student-facing staff and support supplies and programs. The entire board's commitment to balance the needs of our staff and students with the needs of our taxpayers is greatly appreciated. Regardless of the dollar amount attached to this budget, one thing is clear: the entire Ithaca community wants the same thing. High-quality schools that do an exceptional job of educating our incredibly diverse student population. I understand that this is an expensive thing to ask from our community, but the negative effects of a defeated budget would have dire consequences for our students and educational programs. Therefore, I'm here tonight to urge all taxpayers to vote yes on this year's revised budget. While considering your vote on May 21st, it's important to remember that the school budget voting system is and should be part of a larger conversation about the systemic inequity of funding schools through the property taxes of single-family homeowners. In the past year, members of the Ithaca Teachers Association have engaged in public conversation about the role tax-exempt entities play in sharing Ithaca's tax burden. We have publicly urged Cornell University to contribute a more fair share to the community by joining the Make Cornell Pay Coalition. At the state level, our state union, New York State United Teachers, has prioritized legislative advocacy and action to encourage our governor to commit to her promise of fully funded state aid for all districts. Big win, by the way. We have proposed statewide revenue raising initiatives that increase the amount millionaires and billionaires would contribute to our state education budget. And we are committed to continuing to work towards changes to school funding plans at all levels of power. But we understand that change will not come before we vote on this budget. We sincerely hope that the taxpayers of Ithaca can see that school taxes are part of a larger conversation about how we pay for the communities we want to live and work in and how a yes vote to the revised budget is just one way that we can collectively step forward towards those goals. Thank you for your time.
Meg Holbert.
My name is Meg. I've been the librarian at Northeast for the last nine years, and I'm here to speak in support of the budget and to enlighten the public on the ramifications of it not passing. The real cost won't be a few extra markers and electric school bus or books. The cost will be your experienced educators. Because besides the inevitable cuts to staffing that will come from a lower budget, many can't afford to stay anymore without the wage increase this budget plans for. Just to put things in perspective, over the last three years, the median teacher salary has taken a 5.26% pay cut in comparison with the cost of inflation. Compared to our neighboring districts, we have one of the lowest median teacher salaries compared with commensurate experience due to our pay structure. The last several years, I have watched more ICSD teachers walk across the street to Bocie's or to neighboring towns so they can be paid a significantly higher and more livable salary. To that point, approximately 40% of our teachers have been newly hired in the last four years. Ithaca is ranked the second most expensive small city in the country to rent a one-bedroom apartment in. Yet our salary is some of the lowest in the region, and after nine years, I make far below the average salary of a teacher in the US and significantly below the median income for the county. I worked three jobs most days to make ends meet, and in fact, I came from my other jobs of staffing after school and cleaning houses before coming here tonight. I'm placed in a position now where I have a heartbreaking choice between a job and community that I love dearly and paired with an endless, paired with an endless day of side hustles or choosing life and a family. And my story is very common at ICSD for teachers living off their salary. And if teachers can't get reasons to compete with inflation or our neighboring districts, the experience and expertise will walk out the door. A teacher with the ability to manage difficult behaviors because they have seen them before, the expertise that is willing to tutor and create clubs and activities and bring grants and new material to students won't stay. Or even just the experienced teacher who serves to mentor our new staff. That's the cost. People have every right to be angry about the assessments and taxes they've received, but voting the budget down punishes the wrong people. The state funds 30% of our district, where in neighboring districts, the funding is 70% due to Ithaca's unique composition of property. If you have, if you want to vote the budget down to bring scrutiny to how ICSD funding is allocated, I ask you to look first to where it is allocated from. 43% of the property in Ithaca is owned by Cornell, but they only contribute $650,000 to our budget. The contribution pays for a grand total of 18.57 students here. Our community is shouldering $46 million of untaxed property needed to educate children, many of whom are brought here by Cornell. I'm asking the community to think critically and please vote yes for the budget. Otherwise, we will be voting good teachers out the door.
Jess Adoria.
Hard act to follow. We love you, Ms. Holbert. Hi, my name's Jess Adoria, and I have a seventh grader at DeWitt, and I'm here as an involved parent. Just wanted to share my thoughts on the DeWitt Orchestra and music education. The DeWitt Orchestra has been the touchstone of my daughter's middle school experience. Orchestra is her joy, it's her community, it helps her to be a better student. Orchestra is everything to her. I would say this is true of many of the orchestra students at DeWitt. And sadly, the DeWitt Orchestra is not the same community it was two months ago, and I'm not going to mention any names, but the sudden absence of a beloved teacher has taken a hard hit on the community. We're all very grateful that two accomplished musicians came and stepped in to lead the students. And I thank the board and the district for valuing our students' musical education enough to put the kids in such good hands. Ms. Shalulu has also been helpful. But while I appreciate all these efforts, none of them are a replacement for the orchestra community that we used to have. The students used to feel motivated, used to feel like orchestra was cool, so they wanted to do 100 days of practice and not miss a single day. To me, it seemed like the students were engaged and excited because they were able to direct their own ship, to be involved in brainstorming and creating the agenda for the orchestra. The kids were the ones responsible for leading all of that, and it was a dynamic space for them in which to discover their own potential. The projects the kids have worked on in orchestra have been creative and engaging. Last year, they held a hip-hop orchestra with a guest violinist and DJ on a turntable, in case you missed that. Pretty cool. This year, they partnered with Cinemopolis and played the score for a silent film. Ms. Marshall and Ms. Shalulu and the kids just saw that project to completion this past weekend. There have always been high expectations for the students. At the beginning of this year, the chamber orchestra started rehearsing Vivaldi, The Four Seasons, which is quite a challenging piece. And they've all been working hard on various quartets and duets this past year, different configurations that have boosted their skills and helped them work together. Also been really difficult for these kids, especially in the face of losing the community they used to have, to not be allowed to have an end-of-year orchestra trip. The kids have been working hard all year to put together a trip to Philly. Despite a swell of parent support, we were told the trip can't happen. And additionally, the orchestra students are not able to attend the Hershey Park trip with the band and chorus students. Or, because the strip is traditionally a really important motivator, and so we've seen a lot of disengagement among the students for that reason also. In summary, I just want to encourage you to continue to prioritize music education for our kids. The work they're doing in orchestra is really vital to their work. in orchestra is really vital to their work as students in general, and there are many studies to support the importance of music to brain development. I personally would love to see the orchestra return to the vitality that it had two months ago. Let's continue to give our kids the best musical education we can. Thank you for hearing me.
Angie Beal.
She's here.
She's online. Okay. R.D. Junior.
Well, I wear a few different hats. I'm speaking to you tonight as the head of the Science Department at Ithaca High School. Keep this brief. I am concerned about the accuracy of the staff and class size numbers that were reported at the HR Committee last week, and what this means for voters as they weigh their decision about our budget. The slide shared at the meeting reports 21 science teachers at IHS. We have 18, including myself and a teacher who has one science class and then also teaches technology the rest of the time. There have never been 21 of us to our knowledge, to my knowledge, and certainly not in the last three years, in which have served as department leader. The slides also report an average of 18.6 students per class. This is likely because support labs, which are capped at eight students, are averaged in with actual academic classes. It's what it looks like, anyway. Class caps are more relevant than an average. The caps are set at the beginning of the year and are based on the number of students, the age and needs of the students, the amount of available space, and the number of available teachers. So these numbers are related. This year, with our 18 teachers, our science electives are actually capped at 28 students. AP classes are capped at 30. Ninth grade RH Bio is capped at 26. Tenth grade RH Earth Science is capped at 23. RH means Regions Honors, just both taught in the same class. And then our non-AP Chemistry and Physics classes are capped at 28. 26 ninth graders is a very different number from 18.6, which was reported as an average, and I understand that all sorts of factors were discussed at that meeting. But when it comes down to it, the voters, the taxpayers, they deserve clear data without a lot of nuance and qualifiers. Before they vote on a budget, they need to know what it looks like for a student in the classroom. They need to know that ninth graders are taking their classes with up to 25 other students. AP classes are taking their AP students are taking their classes with up to 29 other students. And over the next three years, due to construction at IHS, they will be doing so in small, non-laboratory spaces. It is not just the IHS Science Department that has fewer staff and larger classes than was actually reported last week in committee. It is IHS English, minor-performing arts, math, world languages. Teachers from other schools in the district have also told me about the issues that they have with those numbers as well. Taxpayers should be aware, if the district is forced to cut instructional positions, it won't be 18 students in a ninth-grade class because it isn't 18 now. It would be closer to 28 or 29 14-year-olds learning to work with chemicals and scalpels and working on their literacy skills. It won't be 30 in an AP class. It'll be closer to 32 or 33, if not higher, trying to learn complex content in a crowded space. I'll end my time tonight by asking HR and the HR Committee to share accurate data so that people are adequately informed when they go to make this difficult and complicated decision on voting day. Thank you.
Kieran Weaver.
Hi, my name is Kieran Weaver, and I also wanted to talk about the experience my daughter has had with disappearing staff in the last couple of years. She was at Northeast in her last year when Lady Coyle, I'm so sorry, when, I really apologize, when the principal suddenly was gone, and nobody had any understanding of why. And this year, she's lost her orchestra teacher, and then just a short time later, all of a sudden, the associate principal was gone. My own working world is from the church, and so we know what it is to have difficult staff situations. You know that, and I know that. And the church has learned in the hard way that transparency is the best way forward. If you have a staff person who is asking for their privacy to be respected, then I think that makes a lot of sense. That person is asking, please, you know, this is really difficult, and we don't know what that situation could be. Maybe it's a cancer diagnosis that they want to handle in their own way. Maybe it's something that is difficult and is going to come back to their family in a small city. But if the staff person isn't asking for it, then I don't think that we should be told that the privacy is being respected on their behalf, which is what we've seen in emails. The speculation that takes place in the community when somebody disappears suddenly and the aftermath is surrounded by silence and a sense that no information will be shared, no matter what, that kind of speculation really hurts the community. What's likely to take place is that there's a residual stress, and it comes out organizationally, comes out in the community, in the culture of the schools, and it comes out in the kids' lives, as they don't know what to trust and what to feel is a faithful and reliable foundation for them. So I just want to ask you to consider having a little bit more transparency. There are easy ways to open the doors even to very difficult situations, to say, somebody's taken another job. That's an easy one, right? To say, somebody's had a health concern, and they're willing to let us share that, so please allow them to have their privacy. Or if situations are more difficult, you can say, unfortunately, an allegation has been made, and we have to conduct an investigation. That's all that we can share right now, but we want you to know that this isn't necessarily something that we know is true. You know, there are ways to phrase this. Once that door is opened, then people understand why that privacy is a requirement without feeling as though there is kind of tyranny or corruption, which is unfortunately one of the speculations that is rampant in the community, and that doesn't help the schools, doesn't help the kids, doesn't help families to trust where they're sending their kids every day. So thank you.
To my board colleagues, before we continue, we are at one-half hour of public comment. We have four additional folks who have signed up, and so if it's the boards want or will, we'll entertain motions.
Jill.
I move that we continue the public comment period.
Second.
I heard Adam first. Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Any discussion or debate? All in favor? It is unanimous. We're here. We will continue on. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me? Testing, testing. I can see myself.
We cannot hear you, Karina.
Okay, I'm testing. I can hear the audio. Testing, testing. My audio is on.
Yep, we're working right now. This will not count towards your three minutes, obviously.
Testing, testing, testing.
Karina, maybe what we'll do is we'll continue on with the other speakers and hope that we can figure this out and come back to you if that is agreeable to you.
That's good.
Fantastic. We'll try to, we'll try to make it work. We'll come, we'll return shortly.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I did not prepare my comments, so I'm setting a timer, but if anybody wants to wave at me if you think I'm running out of time, just let me know. I am here also to speak in favor of the budget, and I agree with some of the teachers who spoke earlier. I am an adjunct instructor at Cornell University. I've lived in Ithaca for 12 years. I'm not a parent, although I have many friends who have children in the school district. I came in midlife to do a PhD at Cornell and finished my PhD right before the pandemic and realized I'm over 60 now. I wasn't going to be able to get, I'm in the humanities, my PhD is in English literature, and I realized I wasn't going to get a job. And then I got thrown out of my apartment that was a rental apartment in Ithaca, when I actually, when I needed public assistance. And then I, since more recently, I've been working as an adjunct professor at Cornell. And, and I had to buy a house in the district. And the reason I'm telling you all these personal things about myself is that I want you to believe me when I say I know how much people are hurt by the taxes. Like, my tax bill is a very significant hit in my budget. My income is not high, my employment is precarious. I'm not young, I'm not in good health. So I know why people feel the pinch of taxes, but I also know what it's like to teach students who haven't had the benefit of the kind of small classes and direct face-to-face discussion that is the absolutely necessary preparation to college-level work as writers and thinkers in fields like the humanities and the social sciences. I teach writing courses based on documentary film. I teach a wide variety of students. I have, it's, Cornell certainly makes an effort to admit a diverse student population, and I get many interesting students from all over the world. But I also get a certain number of students at Cornell who are from extremely wealthy backgrounds, which is a kind of disadvantage in itself, honestly, to them as students, because they do not have the experience that people have in public schools of being, of learning together with a really diverse body of students and working together and having discussions and learning how to do readings of complex texts and things like that. I've seen a marked, I've been teaching for years, I've been teaching English since the 1990s, and I've seen a marked decline in literacy and general skills, even at Cornell, where the students have come in through a very competitive process. This is partly, I think, due to pandemic learning loss, but I also think it's due to the defunding of teaching and spaces for instruction. And the reason I think that's relevant to this question of the budget is that, I mean, I agree completely with the analysis that says it's because of Cornell that the taxes are so high. I feel it. Like, my house was reassessed as soon as I bought it. Sorry, is that me?
You can, you can finish up with the closing statement.
So, so anyway, my taxes are way too high, but it's not the fault of the schools. The kids really, really need all their teachers, and I hope that the budget will pass.
Stephanie Hessler.
Hello. I was listening to the news on the way here, and they mentioned the number of children who had been killed in Gaza since October. And it's really hard to hear that and feel like I have no power to do anything. But as an Ithaca resident and voter, I do have the power to support a budget that supports the children here. And not only do I live here, I actually attended this very school. I went to Fall Creek Elementary to DeWitt. Shout out to DeWitt Orchestra. I won't say what year, but I graduated from IHS. Children deserve good schools, and the people who teach them should have the things that they need, including good healthcare and retirement. Thank you.
Have we got Karina? Able to be heard?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me, and thank you also for extending the comment period. I am Karina Lokenhoff, and I'm a parent in the district, and I will have two kids in the Ithaca High School this coming fall. I'm concerned about the limited class selections due to the new universal lunch schedule. Ithaca High School prides itself for its strong menu of electives, but many of these electives require a long-term commitment over four years. This includes the engineering track, Project Lead the Way. It includes the language track, which leads to the seal of biliteracy, and it includes band and orchestra and choir and so on. Before the high school switched to seven periods and universal lunch in 2022, hundreds of parents signed a petition. They asked the district to keep the eight-period schedule because they were concerned that students would have to cut down on electives. At the time, the district assured parents that this would not be a problem. You promised that there would be strong zero-period offerings to keep the schedule flexible. That makes sense, but the reality has not lived up to that promise. For example, our son was looking forward to complete Project Lead the Way, but last summer, we were suddenly told that he would not be able to fit the required classes into his junior year, and the conflict in the schedule could not be resolved, even though he offered to take his language requirement as a self-study course. So our son planned to catch up with Project Lead the Way in his senior year, but again, we're told that there's a class conflict, and even though he's willing to give up his beloved band to prioritize engineering, he won't be able to take it. Now, it's important that the problem is not that our son is trying to fit more than seven classes in the schedule. The problem is that he can't find zero-period classes that would fulfill any of his graduation requirements. In particular, there are too few zero-period classes that cover core requirements such as English or government. Ironically, our son may end up with an empty zero period because he can't find any class that would make sense for him to take. We have reached out to the school multiple times about this concern, but there's no resolution in sight, and this is not an isolated problem. We have heard from many other parents whose children are having difficulty fitting in electives because of universal lunch and limited zero-period options. The district keeps being praised for its rich music program and its outstanding STEM program, and it's a bit sad and ironic that the scheduling issues prevent high school students from using these opportunities. This also affects college planning. Many universities and colleges are now making the SAT optional, so a strong track record of electives is a key factor in college admissions. In conclusion, I urge you to provide the high school with the resources it needs to expand its zero-period offerings and restore the access to electives that students enjoyed before the switch to universal lunch. Thank you so much for your time.
Are you all consuming? All right, that's everybody. We have signed up. Oh. Yeah, I'll be great. Sure. Tell us your name.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much for adding me to the schedule. Hi, everyone. I'm Justine Modica, and I am a postdoc. I'm a labor historian at Cornell. And I wanted to be a high school history teacher. That was my dream. And when I went to college, I took all the education courses and trained enough and started doing student teaching in the fall after my senior year. And it was the hardest thing I've ever done in my entire life. I would spend all day, you know, teaching my, my lessons and meeting with students, counseling students, and then I would go home at night, and then I felt as though that was when my real workday began, trying to prep and learn all sorts of new things and think of exciting ways to present the material to my students. And I was, I was exhausted and overwhelmed, and I ended up deciding not to go on that route because I didn't have it in me. And I've gone the easier route of pursuing an academic career. And, I mean, without any jokes, because I really think it's, I could not have possibly done it because of the number of hours it takes. And when I hear that we have colleagues in this room, teachers who are working second jobs, I'm horrified. That's, no one who is working with students full-time teaching should be working second jobs. We can't have teachers in our community who are put in that situation, where the only way that they can pay their bills is by taking additional jobs. There's just no time and there's days to do this. We have people who are able to bring their full selves and be rested and refreshed, one can't even be as a teacher, when they come to school in the morning. And so I urge, urge, urge people to pass this budget. It's so necessary. We cannot reduce teacher salaries. We cannot cut We cannot reduce teacher salaries, we cannot cut programs, we cannot increase class sizes. And, you know, I also want to just echo the fact that Cornell should be the one who's paying, of course, right, this is. I think that that is the the biggest push that we should be making in future is getting Cornell to actually pay its fair share. But in interim, in the process of fighting for that, we need to make sure that our students and our teachers get what they deserve and pass this budget. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for their public comments. We will now move to board responses. I guess I will take the unusual step of responding first. To our first, thank you to the Golden Opportunity Program and GoTutors. Been involved in a supporter of the program for some time, greatly appreciative of the work that's being done. To our ICSD retirees who came to speak with us, first and foremost, thank you for your service and all your work. I had the pleasure of knowing you or have the pleasure of knowing many of you personally, if not with me, but also with our child. And we will continue those conversations, so you'll hear from us, we'll just, we'll continue those conversations. To the question about personnel. I'm speaking as a board member who has fifteen years of experience. And it is over those fifteen years, and I'm speaking about over those fifteen years. Conversations around silence and speculation, on one hand, I understand. And I want to let folks know that we find ourselves in an extremely unique position. And that board members take an oath. Not just to the New York State Constitution, but the US Constitution. Which has a significant form of regulation about what we can do and what we can say. And so with any personnel matter, it does not matter what any employee says. What the board can say is it's a personnel matter. And so I recognize that that does not satisfy many in the community. I recognize that everything that was spoken and said. And then over my thirty years of being an Ithaca resident, I've seen it from multiple perspectives, again, both as a parent. As a grandparent, as a community member, as a community activist, as a board member. And it does not solve the uncomfortable situation where we find ourselves in is that we are not able to speak. So I appreciate folks sharing, and that's what I will share as my board responses. Any other board members?
I'd like to thank everyone who was so brave to come up and share as well as. Just, you know, comments too. And with regard to. Budget discussions last, at our last meeting on the sixteenth. I'd just like to stress that we continue to hear. As a board, continue to hear from the community, continue to hear from everyone in this room and beyond. And but I'd like to give thanks for us going back and forth as a board. Going back and forth with our administrative staff, with Dr. Brown, with our chief operating officer, Amanda Verba. Who worked with us on developing and and proposing the alternate budgets that were presented and we went back and forth many times, even over the weekend. Proceeding that meeting, so I just want to continue to thank them for working with us and thanking my colleagues for their input too.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to also thank everybody tonight, you know, who came out to public comment. I think it's really important for people in the community to come and participate. You know, in in all these community discussions. And it's also definitely takes some bravery to come and speak in front of a lot of people, so thank you. Also, just echo what Sean said to to all the retirees, you know, thank you so much for all your years of service. Regarding the healthcare discussion. Definitely understand where you're coming from, have parents who are retired New York State teachers as well. So I can definitely hear that perspective and we're going to be discussing it as a board and we'll take all of your comments into consideration when we do. So thanks for for sharing them. Regarding the discussion about music. And the music program in the at the curriculum committee meeting, Dr. Brown. Comes and presents a segment that we we call Equity and Excellence. And we were talking last time about how I think sixty seven percent. Of all, all students are engaged in the elementary music program in terms of of instruments, so I think we definitely value that. See that as very important and definitely want to continue supporting, you know, the music program, it's a really important part of the district. And that's all I think I want to say. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Again, thank everybody for coming out and sharing your experiences and your perspectives. I want to thank Artie for giving us. Another view of what class size and. And. Looks like at the high school and particularly she talked about science. So that's good for and for us to know, but as as she pointed out, for voters. To understand and not misunderstand. What what the experience of students looks like. So also, you know, I. I want to thank and acknowledge what, let's see, I have to look at who this. Oh, Jane, just for speaking so eloquently about what. You see as someone teaching at the university level. What experiences that our students in Ithaca have that prepare them. To thrive in college and those are the things that that we want to continue to provide for them. The importance of small classes of a diverse student experience in the classroom. And also, I was thinking about the fact that Eileen Bach talked about having been at the. Poetry Slam at Ithaca High School, which is just one of. An amazing number of. Co-curricular activities that our students participate, particularly at the secondary level. And how rich those experiences are, and we also had a commendation ceremony following the poetry slam. Where something like three hundred students were acknowledged for their excellence, their performance, their participation in. An incredible number of and varied. Co-curricular activities and they're able to do that because we have. Teachers and staff people who served as advisors and coaches and mentors and support people. So that they can have those experiences. So I just appreciate all people sharing. That view of what goes on in the district and what could be lost. If we don't have a a budget to support it.
All right, yes, I'm on. So I just want to say hello to Randy and Sarah, two of the best teachers. I've ever seen and have often said in this room and. Wherever I am, once you see good teaching, you can't unsee it. And thank you for inviting me into your classroom and doing what you guys have done for. As many decades as you've done it, that's all I'll say. And to all the teachers in the room, all the teachers listening, all the teachers around the country. We know at this table, teaching is a political act. Right? You you have made a political decision and to take into jumping into this profession. What you teach and how you teach. Is a cyclical challenge. That I am not sure many people appreciate and all would be up to. Right now, around the country, there are districts already had hundreds of. Jobs going unfilled, who are now laying off hundreds of teachers. There are other places where what you can actually say to your students, even if it's a historical fact, is being challenged. We have tried as hard as we can in my tenure here. Which is long. To create the space for teachers to do what teachers do. We've even tried to expand your capacity, because we know coming out of the educational programs, that there is a, there are huge gaps. And what we would like our teachers to be prepared to do. Given the unique nature of this school district, which I remind people who do not know. Roughly thirty three, this is Sean's research, thirty three percent. Rural, some people say poor rural, we know that's not exclusive, but thirty three percent rural, thirty three percent kids who would consider themselves urban. And hip and about thirty three percent on the hills, dual parents. Sometimes with patents, sometimes with intellectual property, two or three books. That's a lot. And as Mora said, we just came from accommodation where academic excellence was rewarded, where athletic prowess was rewarded. Where the ability to speak publicly and debate on a platform was rewarded, where participation in cultural events. Around the country, around the world, in fact, and around the state. Was recognized for its excellence. None of us should be in this position. It's terrible for me to hear Meg say that she has to have a different job, another job. Thank you for speaking that so powerfully, we, I've said publicly here, I want that to end. All the folks who decried the increase in taxes. Here's what you're saying to our community and again, I'm not placing a value judgment on how people vote. On May twenty first, because. Having to write that check for the taxes could mean genuine difficulty for some people. But let's be clear, if this budget continues to go the way people spoke to here powerfully, calling us pigs at the trowel. Calling us wasteful spenders, calling us all sorts of things which. Were interesting because most of the gentlemen who came here to speak, I've never seen at this board building in fifteen years. So for the teachers who spoke truth to that power, I appreciate you. To have the audacity to charge four thousand, five thousand dollars for an apartment and tell us that we have to sacrifice for children. In another setting, we'd be having a different conversation, but I'm a public servant. And I need to be kind and gentle on this side of the table. But let's just have an honest conversation about what folks are saying. They're saying they want larger class sizes. They're saying they want some of our most vulnerable students to not be represented in their classroom. They're saying they don't want. Folks to be able to take our kids overseas. They're saying they don't want the trips, they don't want the enhancements, they don't want the things that they see as excess. I never ran for this position to be concerned about what other districts are doing. I ran for this position to be concerned about the six thousand, fifty five hundred, some odd kids. Who we are responsible for in the Ithaca City School District. In the commendation ceremony, again. May my heart sing because no matter what's happening outside of this building, no matter what's happening outside of this town, what's happening, no matter what's happening. Happening outside this state, those kids could look across from each other and see the future of this country. Represented different in different ethnicities, from different locations, with different languages. And different ways that they have a place at the table in this society. I think we're at a crossroads in this community. I don't know what's going to happen, but I do know I'm prepared, if I'm elected again, to make that trip down to Albany and continue to fight. For. An increased foundation aid formula, I'm willing to go up that hill and talk to the folks at Cornell, I'm a graduate, I've worked there. I've known the presidents, all the last five of them, and have that tough conversation about contributions. Because if we fail here, Cornell, as I've said repeatedly, will have to pay their. Professionals a substantial amount more, because there's going to be a competitor to the Ithaca City Public School District. We have a few more weeks to wrestle this out here and have conversations and have folks speak. To the reporters in the room, to the media folks. I hope you. Translate what you've heard today at this meeting. As loudly as you transmitted the voices of the folks who stood here previously with power and wealth. And told us that we are pigs. Thank you.
Sean, I'm just maybe my counting problem, I'm just trying to make sure we respond to all the topics and I I don't think we've responded to seven versus eight periods. At the high school and I'm gonna say that I think that is, but then I'm gonna ask. Those who know better to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that that's a decision that the administration of the high school. Will be taking in conjunction with faculty input and that that faculty input is being gathered now, but am I getting that right?
That happened years ago, but prior to the decision, I think that was referenced, the conversation that we had about. What schedule to move forward with, but it's an ongoing conversation, we're always looking at continuously improving the schedule, yes.
And I also would just like to reiterate, part of what I heard in that comment was to think about ways to support additional possibilities, electives. Folks may not know, but school board members are prevented from using school district. Media or modes of communication in support of the budget, so we are legally barred from doing so. What I will tell people is to participate in democracy. And if there are no other comments, we will move to our representatives.
Good evening. I thought we would give a little update on athletics, so today was senior night for track and field athletes. And baseball, lacrosse, softball and tennis teams also have home matches this week. And it seems like the spring sport athletes are having a lot of fun. The tennis team is going viral right now with almost three hundred thousand views and counting. On a team bonding video that they posted on Instagram, wow, it's very impressive. Last week was a very meaningful and important couple of days for the music department. So on Thursday, the IHS Wind Ensemble and Chamber Orchestra performed for over a thousand. Second graders soon to be choosing their instruments. And not only only did we have a great crowd here in Cope Auditorium, it was also live streamed to many other schools in the county. And we don't usually play for an audience of little kids, so the energy was absolutely amazing. And we received a bunch of hand drawn thank you cards yesterday, so that was absolutely adorable. And Friday and Saturday was the music department, they went to an overnight trip to New York City. So any student part of the orchestras, bands, choirs were available to go and they attended the performance by the New York Philharmonic with Hillary Hahn as the solo. Soloist and they also watched the Broadway production of The Great Gatsby. And also in regards to lunch, we have a new change, so they introduced milk dispensers, which are like soda vending machines, but with different kinds of milk. And so they've replaced milk cartons that were offered previously.
So AP exams are coming up starting next week, so a lot of students are pretty preoccupied with those and working hard to study in these last few weeks. One concern that some students had was that some of the exams, so I think it's AP US History, AP Language, and maybe one other one. Are taking place on the makeup dates because of the construction of Bluestorm, so some students were concerned that if they were sick on the makeup dates. Then they might not have an opportunity to take the exam, but during our meeting, Mr. Trumbull, we were discussing this and it seemed like there is a plan in place for that, so that was really. Good to hear that those concerns are being addressed.
Yeah, everyone should fi- should follow our tennis video, get more views up on that. But in more serious news, we've been in conversation with Dr. Bryman about replacing the stolen mirrors in the downstairs G. Okay, yeah, we're getting them in downstairs G and H bathrooms, which were apparently ripped off their hinges by some students, which is an interesting decision, if you ask me. But this sad. Uh, but this Saturday, we also have another SAT for a variety of juniors, some of whom are taking it for the first time. And others are trying to improve their scores. There's also NISM A taking place this week and which is a music competition, for those who don't know, that affects a lot of high scores in IHS and I think uh, LACS two, right? You guys do NISM A? Okay, maybe, but uh, choir, band, and orchestra kids will be engaging in that soon. And as was mentioned several times, the poetry slam happened today. So thank you to all the performers that showed it up. And regardless of the outcome, it was a great event.
Um, hi, everybody. But is it, is it good?
Yes.
Okay, um, so as I'm sure you know, Rosemary Lane, the bus lane in the high school, which many of us used as a back entrance, has been closed. This has led to certain traffic issues, especially nearing the hours of nine AM in the high school parking lot. And since most of us are either parents in a rush or, you know, young seventeen-year-old drivers, it does get a little stressful. I, I'm also a recipient of that stress, but luckily we are working with Mr. Trumbull to find ways to be able to mitigate that stress and have a smoother parking lot experience. Rosemary Lane was closed for safety reasons because certain um, individuals apparently were speeding in the parking lot. Which if you ask me is uh, as Caidman would phrase it, interesting decision. So we're working on making the parking lot safer and more efficient in the mornings and at pickup time while realizing that we can't have Rosemary Lane open because safety is, as Mr. Trumbull keeps reminding us, inconvenient. I say that with like no prejudice or like, I don't mean to sound sarcastic or rude, just like, it actually is. Um, and further news, the Boys Lacrosse Team also has their senior night this Saturday. They have a home game and I am told that it's going to be very good by my friends on the Boys Lacrosse Team, so. And we also went through our seal of belligerencies. I think that thirty-five seniors achieved this seal. And we did so in ten languages and I passed both of mine, which I was not expecting for the second one, so. And um, we also had commendation awards, so congratulations to all those recipients. One of them is my little brother, so I'm having a little proud big sister moment. And that's about all I got for you guys.
One thing we forgot to mention, rather, I forgot to mention last month was the International Fair took place back then, which was a big event which brought together a lot of different communities across the cultural, cultural backgrounds that are present at our high school and really showcased the diverse experiences that we have. And it was a great experience and we hope to replicate it as a student council next year.
Thank you, Ithaca High School, LACS.
Hi, um, I will start with a an event that's upcoming um, this Thursday at four thirty in the Black Box Theater at IHS is the Second Annual Public Education Symposium. Um, this is an event I helped organize last year with the help of Joakim Haltem from New Roots. Um, and this is an event where student representatives from New Roots, LACS, and IHS will come together as a panel um, and answer questions about our experiences in our schools. Um, I'd love to see you all there. I saw someone be there last year. Um, and it's just a really great opportunity to hear from students who all have um, diverse learning styles and have all experienced different school atmospheres um, and educational pedagogy. So um, yeah, hope to see you guys there Thursday at four thirty in the Black Box Theater at IHS.
Several students last week presented their science PBats at Cornell. Uh, and uh, there will be more uh, coming soon. Uh, it's always a relief to get another graduation requirement uh, out of the way, so good job to everyone who did that.
Um, so, starting tomorrow, we're starting our election process for um, next year's student board representatives. Um, all of the candidates will give speeches at our all-school meeting tomorrow morning, um, followed by a short debate in the next week, um, and then we'll move forward to voting. Um, so it's just great to see this process continue. Last year was the first year that we had democratically elected um, representatives in a number of years. Um, and thanks to one of our seniors who is revising, improving, and building upon this process as their senior project. Um, so wish me luck and hopefully I'll see you guys next year.
I will not see you guys next year. Yeah. Uh, we also got a milk machine in our cafe. Uh, I'm really a big fan of it. It's a hundred percent free. One percent milk is readily available for everyone to drink. And uh, it will, it, it's a, it's a wonderful step towards sustainability because uh, the milk will save a lot of water for students, so that's, that's really nice. Uh, finally, uh, Trips Week is approaching. Uh, it's a little over two weeks away now. Uh, just to, to name a few trips, we've got the Aquasasne Cultural Exchange Trip, the Adarondack Glamping Trip, uh, trip to see Broadway, Circus Culture Involved Trip, Hurricane Katrina Relief Trip, Rock Climbing Trip, and of course, the Spanish trip uh, to Spain, which me and Stella are both very excited about. Yeah.
Thank you. Board responses.
As a little brother myself, I can appreciate the little brother love.
Uh, as an older brother, no, I'm just messing around. Thank you, uh, as always, to our uh, representatives to the board. Um, we are greatly appreciative of everything you share and uh, open our eyes to, so thank you very much. Uh, we will continue on with the agenda if there are no additional responses, uh, and that brings us to the consent agenda. And we will entertain.
Second, sorry.
The consent agenda was moved by Mora, seconded by Jill. Um, questions, conversation, debate, discussion? Hearing none. Do you still need a few more? No, we will call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented?
Am I missing the actual consent agenda, the components? We normally get a sheet with the components?
Uh, no, we have a shortened version of the agenda and paper. You do have the full consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I see. It's a condensed version. The full one wasn't attached.
My apologies. I'm gonna ask for that vote one more time to make sure we're on the same page. All in favor? I believe that is unanimous. Fantastic. Thank you very much. Uh, and that brings us to the superintendent report. Dr. Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Professor, and I'll be very brief because uh, much of what I was gonna share was related to the accommodation ceremony and folks some of that very well. I'll just remind folks that we tend to post all of the honorees on our website. Um, and look for the names and the recognitions that we shared this afternoon at BI on our website with other highlights. So again, an amazing ceremony. Yes, up to three hundred, I think close to three hundred young people and adults being recognized for their outstanding achievements. Thank you, and thank you all for being there.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Uh, that means we'll continue on with the agenda. It brings us to our committee updates. And I know I say this every time that we have committee updates, a reminder that our communication team does an excellent job providing committee summaries, which includes usually one to two-page review of what has taken place. But equally as important for me are minute marks to the video, so folks can actually see what the discussion is. So thank you to the communications team. And we will use this opportunity to provide additional information. So up first is the HR Committee. Mora.
So the HR Committee met last Tuesday and that was uh, later in the month than we usually.
Sorry.
I never think I meet. Uh, it was later in the month than we usually meet because uh, of spring break. Uh, so um, and then we're going to be having the regularly placed HR and Policy Committee meetings next week on the seventh. Uh, so HR Committee last time, uh, as it was alluded to by one of our uh, co- uh, community commentators, we received a staffing update um, that included some numbers, figures. And as we asked questions and looked at it, it was clear that there are challenges to uh, providing the, this kind of data um, in a way that really uh, is clear and reflective. So I'll say again that I appreciate that already Jewish Jewett from the Science Department talked about, you know, what, what class size actually looks like in the Science Department and uh, as she mentioned, that it's also true in, in schools and other um, departments at the secondary level. So um, I think it's important for uh, for voters not to be misled by some of the numbers um, that are difficult to calculate um, and to make clear. Uh, and then we also had a executive session where we had principals from uh, from Ithaca High School, well, uh, principals and associate principals from Ithaca High School, from Cuba Heights Elementary School, and from LACS come and review with us uh, their teachers who are untenured and it's a valuable process that we've been doing for a number of years now, uh, which helps the, the administrators who are evaluating to really focus in on what they're seeing, what teachers need in terms of support. Um, and to, you know, have a sense and, and have a record of um, what's happening to support and develop teachers um, as they are new to our district. Uh, then the Policy Committee, uh, so last week we had a wonderful presentation from a group of students uh, who talked about the work that they have been doing uh, with restorative justice and providing professional development uh, to educators in our buildings. And they were one of the groups of students that were commended, and rightfully so, uh, at the uh, commendation ceremony earlier. Uh, and we were quite impressed with their perspective and their commitment uh, to the work of um, of establishing a mindset in schools that sees uh, what needs to happen when there's well, first of all, what needs to happen that they talked about is establishing community and community connection in a school. And in doing that, it uh, it helps to avoid conflict. And then they talked about the work that they are doing on how to help people who have been in conflict, whether it's student to student or a student and staff um, to, to resolve the conflict. And I've been, ever since I heard this presentation, I have been quoting one of the kids who talked about how at the end of the process of trying to resolve conflict, that the, the participants, they don't have to like each other, but they have to be cordial. And I'm thinking about putting that on a T-shirt and wearing it at board meetings. Uh, anyway, so um, and then we, we looked at some, and so the restorative ju- justice presentation was part of the context of our continuing to look at the Code of Conduct, um, which is a actually, it's a whole group of policies in a very large document. Uh, and then we had two policies that we reviewed again, which are about to be looked at for a first reading uh, this evening.
Thank you, Mora. It brings us to Facilities Committee and Dr. Tripp.
First, I'd like to say I, I like you and I hope I'm cordial to you, Mora.
That's a both hands.
That's right. But I would like a T-shirt when you get them. Facilities Committee met on April ninth. We had one speaker, public comment, um, and that was Yoyoi who spoke for Zero Waste Ithaca urging us all to educate ourselves regarding concerns about artificial turf. And she hoped that um, that in the future, she's afraid that the installation we have on the football field set a dangerous precedent, and she requested that we be alert in the future and opt for organically managed grass um, on our playing fields. Under discussion items, Ms. Williams highlighted a number of recent staff efforts, including working on a multipurpose room for staff and HR onboarding. Uh, she shared photos of a new baseball dugouts and a cooperative effort between Facilities Athletics and an Eagle Scout Project installing a plaque holding um, record boards at the Aquatic Center. Um, Ms. Dusset reported on many projects, including closeouts on the high school roof project, among other things. And she did, reported, she reported that balancing and conditioning are ongoing at the Enfield Elementary Geothermal System. The Fall Creek Playground, Dr. Lobach from Cornell presented on that process and made recommendations for the Fall Creek Playground. Um, it was a co-designed process with students predominantly fifth grade, fifth graders most involved, but she made a point of saying that all levels of students were at least interviewed about their priorities. The priorities, as she presented them for the new playground, would be um, not in any order, a, a tower or some sort of high feature, trees, swings, climbing and hanging options, and a soccer field or grass field for playing. She recommended a complex structure, multi-level, with opportunities for restoration, social interaction, climbing and jumping. Mr. Gloubitz from Tetrick Tech announced that he's developed, they are developing preliminary plans based on the recommendations from Dr. Lobach's group, and he hopes to submit um, by the end of October, plans to New York State for approval. So there'll be a number of meetings before that, but I urge those who are interested in learning more about the Fall Creek Playground and plans to be active at this time because it is moving quickly from my perspective. Next facilities meeting, May twenty-second, there'll be a focus on sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tripp. That brings us to Finance Committee. Mr. Harris.
Some years ago, our last meeting was April ninth. Uh, we had our final um, large administrative group project presentation at the top, and then Little, Little came and talked to us about the uh, uh, the athletics program and Chris.
The microphone, elder, please.
And Carrie Burke came and spoke to us about the uh, healthcare component of the budget, and it was pretty clear between the two of them that although their budgets do not equate to much money, they provide an incalculable service. Uh, Ms. Burke actually estimated sometimes that having additional nurses on staff and building saves teachers and the principal, and it was quite impressive. Uh, Samantha talked about the increasing participation in extracurricular activities. Again, that was on display during the accommodation ceremony earlier. And anyone who was even tangentially involved in the musical uh, can see what uh, brilliant extracurricular activity looks like. Samantha talked about all our excellent athletes, including the young man on distance track rec- runner who was recognized here on campus, was it, at the high school? When he came back and was celebrated by dozens of people, I was gonna say hundreds, hundreds of dozens of people greeted him as he got off the bus here. Um, then we went into a more formal uh, budget presentation. Folks got to hear one more time from Amanda and her staff what certain cuts would look like. I'm, I'm still in shock over uh, the fact that a twenty million dollar cut would look like something like six hundred and, I think it was six hundred and eighteen to be precise. Teachers who would suddenly be gone from our district? Was it six, no, it can't be, it can't be six hundred and eighty. Was it eighteen teachers? Do anybody else remember that number?
We should go watch the minutes of the actual.
All right. It's in the minute, so if you're interested in what the district would look like with no teachers, that would be a twenty million dollar cut. Uh, no, we, seriously, we had a last uh, opportunity to go around, people gave their alternative. opportunity to go around. People gave their alternative visions of what this could look like. That's the meeting where we started to pare down the numbers that we eventually voted on, which were, which amounted to a $6 million reduction in the total budget.
And this would be a good opportunity just to add on to that, that encouraging the community to go take a look at the Budget FAQ page. My experience in conversation with a number of community members unfortunately has included significant amounts of misinformation or misdata. I understand how those things take place, but we try to respond as much as possible. If folks have questions, send them our way, and you will find those on the FAQ page as well, which some of that was addressed at the finance meeting. So thank you, Mr. Harris. And lastly, we have Curriculum.
Thanks.
Dr. Penwise.
Yeah, and Curriculum, we had our last meeting. It was on April 16. We start out all of our meetings, Dr. Brown talks about the intersect of excellence and equity and centering both of those goals at the same time. And again, we talked a little bit about the music program. I already kind of referenced that earlier today, just how many students have been engaged in the elementary instrumental music program. I think it was, I can't remember if it was 799 or 690. I think it was about 800 students, which was really nice to hear. Talked a little bit about that. We continued a conversation with middle school administration about standards-based grading. It was actually a really nice conversation because we talked with some different perspectives that people were bringing to the table. And we talked about what it means to meet a standard, the different ways that standards can be defined or determined. And also the importance of having robust professional development in place to train teachers and its implementation, where it's being used right now, which is in middle school and elementary school classes. And then later, we talked with, I heard from Catherine Cernera. And we talked a little bit about how to support students during the standardized testing season. And also about the annual Professional Performance Review and how teachers are evaluated and how it might look if evaluation returns to a little bit more local control because there's been more talk about that. We've talked a little bit about teachers choosing an ELA curriculum for grades three through five. You know, that's both academically challenging and culturally responsive and sort of that that journey. And I think that sums it up.
Thank you greatly. That brings us to one of the two policies for this evening, and I will turn it off to my colleague.
So I think the first policy we're going to be looking at to be a, for a first reading is draft policy 4700, independent study. And Ms. Lily Talcott is here to speak to that.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I am Lily Talcott, and I get to serve as the Deputy Superintendent for the school district. Good to see everybody. So in Policy Committee, we've run through this a couple of times. We need to have an independent study policy as per New York State. And so we've worked with our attorneys, we've worked with our colleagues in the Ithaca Teachers Association and our principals to ensure that this policy makes the most sense and outlines a process that is fair for kids, for teachers, and takes the district's fiduciary responsibility seriously. And so, you know, everything's right there for you to take a look at. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So is this a new format we use in this document that shows if this legal mandates and other things?
Yes, this is to help us track sort of where we are in the process and help people see the what and why of our of our new policies. We welcome feedback if you have thoughts or ideas about how to make a difference.
I think it's great, and I believe it was developed by Emily Tracy Arm.
Yes, thank you, Emily.
Who says she loves to develop forms.
She does indeed.
Passion of hers.
I didn't know what which direction it was going to go, so I was going to take the arrows if they were coming.
I'll be the other T-shirt we have for sale.
Yes. It's really nice to have an organized format, honestly, that's common for all new policies, I will say. It just allows us to track it much more easily. So thanks, Em.
So any other questions? So, yeah. All right, so I'll entertain a motion on this policy. Because maybe we shouldn't have done that first, but. Oh, thank you, Jill.
I move that we accept ICSD policy for independent study, draft policy 4700. Oh, for first reading. Thank you.
Yes.
It seems like there have been many readings, but.
First reading officially.
I second.
Thank you. Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any further conversation, questions?
That was my conversation. We have a motion and we have to do a motion for first reading.
Yes. Right. So, all in favor? To be revisited in the Policy Committee and back here to you all for a second reading and adoption, which we hope to do fairly quickly. Okay, the second policy we have to take a look at tonight is draft policy 5111, the Lehman Alternative Community School Enrollment and Admissions Policy.
Great. So this has been many, many years in the making as well with some COVID blips, where we've been essentially codifying the current process with some additional safeguards to ensure that it is legally sound. For the public school lottery process, we have to ensure that there's no waiting system for particular protected characteristics, et cetera. And so we've worked again closely with our lawyers and with the folks who actually administer the lottery to ensure that we're doing this properly. And there were some questions about special education. And once we reach 50 to 51% of students with individualized education plans. And we're pretty far away from that number, but if that does occur, then we're looking at either a change in our charter application to the state. Or another option is truly, we don't have to offer the full continuum at all of our schools, right? As long as we still have, you know, I think a high school as a high school where all of the entirety of the special education continuum is offered, then we wouldn't necessarily need to do that at LACS, but those are all just discussions that we've had moving, moving forward. But those were the big questions in relationship to this from Policy so far.
And I believe Deb Patack, Principal of LACS, she was here at the Policy Committee meeting, and she said that the sixth grade lottery would be taking place this week.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Yes.
I've been pondering this since the presentation. The each elementary school, you've tried to equalize the number of students coming, the applications coming from each elementary school. I see the reasoning for that. I also am a little uneasy about it because I know that there's a lot of fluctuation. I know that some years, there's a great many kids who apply from Fall Creek. And other years, there's hardly any, just an example from a school I know well. And I just wonder what that does in terms of people's odds of getting in. So I'll just share that. I don't have a solution, and I think obviously, this is very well thought out, and I'm certainly going to vote for it. But I'm just wondering, as we think about things in the future, what the, what the, what we lose in fairness, if anything, in doing that. Maybe the answer is nothing. I'm not sure. So that's my thought.
Great point.
A question that I have at some point in time and discuss it, this were the past first reading, if I can read. I would recommend, and I'm sure this is on through lawyers, and so I would hear the reasoning. But in the enrollment section of the policy, the second sentence states that LACS enrolls, and this is roughly 300. I would have great concern about signing a number. We are roughly at 300, given the current space. Should LACS or any other entity change location and change the possibility? I will simply have to say LACS enrolls students selected by a rate of, whatever I can, but my God, it's just law. But the classification of a number, I think, as a policy locks us in long term. And as we know, and folks in the community may know, there are policies that we have not revisited in close to 40 years. And so with that part, I'm just maybe a little uncomfortable just about being that precise. Not that we don't want to be specific, but that's just a quick thought, maybe something to discuss for a second reading.
I've spent a lot of time with this policy. And I didn't even consider that. So I really appreciate it, and I actually think you're right. I don't think it's wise. I don't think any of our other policies cap or even estimate an enrollment, right? Or, you know, try to sort of create enough clarity while also allowing for flexibility, right? And I I think that could kind of box us in. I don't see any legal reason for us to indicate what the enrollment typically is. Where is it? It's right there at the very beginning. Yeah, under enrollment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And my second question, and I apologize to my board colleagues in advance for asking this question. And I apologize to the folks who have written the policy and spent so much time reviewing line by line, as I know, word by word, punctuation by punctuation.
I can't wait to hear what you're going to say.
Thank you. My apologies. I'm wondering, and I realize that this is outside of the scope of a democratic school such as LACS, given legal mandates by the state. But I'm wondering if we received any feedback from current students at LACS about this policy.
No. Great point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no more questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll do that. I move to approve policy 5111, Lehman Alternative Community School Enrollment and Admissions for a first reading.
Second.
Moved by Adam and seconded by Jill. Question, comments?
Yeah, it's going back to this new format. Is it supposed to, is the objective to show what's changing in the policy, or this is the complete new content because it's slightly totally different than what the original policy, like enrollment wasn't in the original policy. I didn't see a section.
This is a complete, this is the complete new policy. It does not make reference to the previous policy, which may have shown changes and edits.
I don't know that we had a previous policy.
There's reference to the previous policy at the top section of this document. And once you click on the link, you go into it, but there's no specific changes.
That's my understanding is we had a practice, not a policy. Correct.
We've got to change that word. Reference the previous practice.
What do you mean by practice, not a policy? Because policy 24.
We we spent time over throughout the years, and I know other folks can speak to it more than I can, but as one can imagine, a school that's been in that, a school that will be celebrating its 50th year in existence this summer, there has been a variety of approaches to the enrollment process. Not so long ago, we tried to standardize that process to make sure that it was a much more random selection of students. What I would see this is doing, and please correct if I'm wrong, if I'm getting our two educational leaders, is this is how I'm to codify some of those changes that we made to ensure that there was, that people had, similar to Jill's point, a more equitable opportunity to enroll in the school. That someone who was taught there, that has not always been the case, and we are moving in that direction. And so the fact that we had administrators, that's part of us asking, just if students had any to it, but but I understand. Did that answer your question, Karen?
Okay, so this is a first, this is the first time we've created a policy 5111. Yeah, I would say I clicked on the red link, policy 2410. It's supposed to be policy adoption.
Oh, yes, that's fair, though. That's, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I was trying to look at what you, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. And if there are no more questions, I'll call the question. All in favor? That's everyone? And that's it?
Great, I'm going to stick around.
Yes, thank you very much, Moira. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is a proposed humbly, respectfully, and lovingly, yet again, another proposed change to this year's academic calendar in ways we hope that will benefit our community.
That's right. I have been the shepherd, I guess Dr. Brown and I have been the shepherd of responsive academic calendars for the current year. So we know when we created this year's academic calendar that there would be some challenges for kids, families, and educators to have a half day for young people and then a full day for the staff on the 26th. And I remember very clearly talking with ITA and other bargaining units, ESPs, IPDA, et cetera, that if we didn't utilize all of our snow days, that would be one that we would shift, right? Because we know that teaching and learning tends to not occur on, let's be real, right? It's the last day of school. We want to give, we want to protect instructional time, and we want to also allow adults to have a sense of closure together in their learning communities. So that's really where this is coming from. So that the proposed change would be the last day for students would be on the 25th as a full day, and the last day for staff would be on the 26th.
I should have began by just saying that this is not a voting item for this evening. We are going to put it out to the community to look for feedback as well and continued conversation. But recognizing that we have not used our snow days, I feel compelled to say that I remember in 2006, Ithaca had about four inches of snow during Ithaca College's commencement. So let's hope we are well past the snow time. But yes, so we're looking for folks to give us feedback. We will post it on the website and there'll be continued conversations. But in the meantime, questions from board members about the suggested or proposed change? Hearing none? We look forward to this being brought back to us and reading anything that folks in the community may have to share about the proposed change as well. That is the, nope, I apologize. We have one more agenda item, Agenda Item 10.5. And we'll entertain motions. This is a resolution to approve expenditures for the 2024 Virtual Policy Meeting. And I can assure those, too, Moira's done it before. Katie, it is riveting. I hope you really enjoy the policy. So we'll enter. Yep. Indeed, indeed. We'll entertain motions.
Okay, I move to approve expenditures for the following board members to attend the NISPA 2024 Virtual Policy Workshop on May 8, 2024. Moira Lang, Katie Eppker.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Katie. Oh, exactly what I said. Thank you, Jill. Additional conversation, discussion, debate. Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank board members very much. Again, to our community, please check out the budget page and the FAQs. Please continue to make plans, participate in democracy, and we will see you all at our next board meeting. Thank you all. Have a good evening.